Nine o'clock, we'll start with our morning workshop.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Commissioners, good morning. First item on the agenda will be the cash balance report.
Will you pull that microphone down where you're talking?
How's this? Is that better?
There you go.
Okay.
There you go.
The wastewater reserve for the debt service, you can see that's incrementally growing from month to month and that'll be, the payment will be made there in December. So that cash will be depleted there and start all over. Any other questions on the cash?
Yeah, I'm curious as to whether we have cash or not necessarily. I'd like to know how much we still owe on this building or have we now paid it out?
I do have that, hold on one second.
That was a long term. No.
When we did, yeah, we were still going to pay that we were paying, almost half a million.
If we sold the City Hall.
If we sold the City Hall.
Well.
Old City Hall.
I was going to include that in our conversation after the meeting, but we can talk about it real quick. In 2016, we have roughly $2.8 million left to pay. That's between the taxable portion and the non-taxable. The taxable portion is about $300,000.
So what have we paid so far?
That being a 26%.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't have that detail, I apologize, I'll have to get that for you.
It's on a 30-year?
No, actually, we have a balloon payment that's due on November 1st, 2016, roughly 2.7.
But the amortization schedule was on a 30-year.
And then the first?
With the balloon.
With the balloon, right.
But it was on a 30-year plan in terms of?
It was $5 million total that we got.
Special envelope, I'll look it up just a minute.
I'm sorry, take it.
Because I do not recall that you did a 30-year.
I don't, I'm with you, I'm not.
No, you didn't do that.
But it's $5 million and we weren't going to do that on a 30. I don't think we were going to do that on a 30-year.
No, I know that we were not. I mean unless y'all did.
November 1st is four years since we did the project.
And then, yes, so it's on 10 years.
It's on a 10-year AM schedule?
No.
No, it was not.
There's 10 years.
Because now that was going to pay this off, because now the old building was going to pay this off.
There is a balloon payment and the balloon payment is due November 1st, 2016, for the bank.
But the original amortization schedule, from what I remember, was on a 30-year AM schedule even though there was a 10-year balloon.
It may or may not be the case, I'll have to go back and verify the details, sir.
Okay, thank you, if you'll have that, I thought maybe perhaps you would have that this morning when we were discussing our goal.
I have a debt schedule basically of information of payments that are coming off the books over time, but I'll get those details.
All right, thank you, Marcus.
Okay, any other questions on the cash balance report? The next item on the list will be the sales tax analysis. And the top half will be the local option sales tax and the bottom half is the SPOST.
I like the new format on this, by the way.
Okay.
Which felt much better.
Thank you. That was Chuck's idea there to put it together. So the local option sales tax, we're roughly 33% into the year and we're showing about 34.9% at this point on the local option. On the SPOST, it shows 27.89 because we have not received at the time when we're putting this information together, we did not get the information from the Bank of New York timely enough to get that into printage. So we're still waiting on those statements to come through. Any questions on the SPOST? And then moving on into the statements by fund. And at this point, there's really not much to comment on regarding the revenues. The property taxes will come in December-January timeframe because of the timing of the bills going out. So that's going to lag a little bit further and then the rest seems to be on cue. I haven't seen anything major come through just yet, but I know we're gearing up for some larger purchases as those property tax revenues come in the door. So we'll be timing our capital accordingly. Have any questions?
I do have a question, but I want to give, I don't want to take up the rest of the meeting, I'll give a few persons.
Okay, sure.
Well, I was going to say, thanks to our conservative budget, our tracking looks pretty good, so. Set low goals and struggle to meet them, right?
Well, I think our position is not unique in that my counterparts in California and other parts of the country have basically the similar story of the cash flow challenges, revenue challenges. Same story, just a different wallpaper.
Right. But I feel like we're in good shape as far as, I mean, you know, we're not thinking.
No.
No, that was sort of my point of my little joke there, we have a very conservative budget, so we're looking good.
You also use the term realistic?
Yes.
And then reality has a lot to do with it.
It's a little bit better, I think.
Any other questions? Ma'am? Thank you.
Our rate study presentation.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Well, Joanna will have the power back on real soon.
Well, you cannot forecast when they're going to have an accident that hits, can you?
It's just Murphy's Law. As soon as you're going to talk about rates, somebody's going to hit a pole, it's no doubt. I just want to continue a conversation that we started last year in a little brief history. Back in 2002, 2005, 2006, we did a rate study. We did not implement that rate study. Couple of different reasons, we wanted to wait until Coggedale was implemented. Now that Coggedale is implemented, we have some other challenges that have come on the horizon and we wanted to take a look and do a new rate study, two reasons, compared to the 2005-2006 study and also build in some of the challenges that we have coming up on us that we'll go into in a minute. We did do a PCA adjustment back in March of 2009 to compensate for that rate study. So basically, it was an apples-to-apples. We've been collecting for that on the approved PCA change that we did back in March of '09. So just to go back on that briefly. We have some challenges this year which we have been talking about that are going to come down in the form of some unfunded mandates and also some added fuel costs. That's going to total up what we estimate to be around about $3.5 million. About 2.8 of that is going to be some of the stuff that we talked about in the rate study. The additional money that we've put in the rates is going to be for short margins, reduced sales. It's going to be a difficult time next year, so everything you're going to see here in a few minutes when I introduce John, we'll be talking about a $3.5 million adjustment. The majority of it, we're going to be able to handle. We're going to roll that into our existing rate and absorb about $2 million of that. We're still going to have to do about a $1.5 million adjustment which we'll go into. You've already received option one that John will talk about. Basically, you've already approved part of option one on the residential winter and summer rates. So that was already approved, proposed and approved by the commission back in '09. So what we also did is on option one, we took that $1.5 million and we rolled it into the CNI customers, the commercial and industrial customers. The residential has stayed the same as it was in the previous rate study. And option two that we'll go into in a minute is the black folder that I just handed you this morning. I remember in our last discussion last year, we had talked about our CNI customers, our small industry, I mean, our small commercial and our commercial customers and also our industrial customers. So in option two, we put a little bit more weight on the residential customer because as you'll see in the program, residential customers are not paying for their own cost. So we'll go into that. So by the end of this, I would ask that by December 14th, you're going to have a couple of decisions to make. You're either going to have to, there's no getting around this added cost that we're going to incur next year. It's not Griffin's fault, it's not MEAG's fault. A lot of it's unfunded mandates come down from the federal government on our smoke stacks and emissions and so. But we're going to have to decide somewhere on option one, option two. And then also, we have the ability, in the PCA that we're going to have left over, about half of that can be claimed as an environmental charge. So do you want to show a separate environmental charge on the bill? So while I introduce John and we'll get down into the nitty-gritty and then we can go through any questions you have.
You are going to discuss our meeting, our state meeting we had a week in before last, aren't you?
Yes, yes.
About what we're, about the costs associated with Plant Vogel?
Everything's in there, right. So I'd like to introduce Mr. John Lansing from Electric Cities and we've got a presentation put together on option one, option two. A lot of reasons that, why we're having to have this added cost and then we'll have an in-depth discussion. So, John?
Before he starts, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I hate to be the bad guy, but the Griffin present and the Central Georgia EMC are the same color on all these to me. I can't tell them apart which is which.
Well, as far as the blue and the black?
So I don't know if anybody else can see those differences, but I can, so I don't know what I'm looking at here.
I'll come up and interpret.
Okay, you're going to have to tell me what we, which is which.
All right, so which one are we going to be looking at, Bill? The option two or the first one that you were saying?
John will walk you through it.
Okay, so which one?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please allow me three or four minutes. Bill has covered most of my presentation for me, but let me backtrack a little and say that the major cause of what is going on here, and I went too far. The major cause of what is going on here is the $77 million budget increase that MEAG Power has predicted for 2011. I showed some of the causes there, Bill touched on some of them. A big part is an unfunded mandate from EPA that the Southern Company closed down Plant Shearer, which is the largest coal plant in the United States for 90 days for one unit and 90 days for one of the other units. And these are the two units where Griffin Power gets a lot of its energy from. So those units will be out of commission, so to speak, next year for scrubber installation. It's about a $250 million job on top of that. There will be excess nuclear fuel outages next year. You know, the Plant Vogel and Plant Hatch reactors need fresh fuel from time to time. There'll be, I think it's a four outage year, which is a very high amount of outages and those are several weeks each, we'll be without our nuclear units. The SEPA, Southeastern Power Administration, has all the hydro projects in the southeast and the city gets some of its power from SEPA. SEPA has increased its rates by about 20% effective October 1st, 2010. So the first bill's already been received under their new higher rate. And then we've got a lowered market cost for next year. The clearing prices are supposed to be 3.8 cents on the average, which is very low, which means that any excess power that the city has will be sold at a very low price and that's bad for the bottom line on your power bill. As a result of all of that, the City of Griffin Shearer and the final MEAG budget is supposed to go up $2.8 billion, which is probably 80% or more of the increased revenue requirement for Griffin Power next year. As Bill suggested, the billing system is now fully operational and we are able to make rate changes that we could not make when the city had the banner utility billing system. And that's why the rates that were approved by this commission in 2006 were never implemented. The cost of service study that I did in order to evaluate the revenues being collected against the cost to serve these various types of customers was 12-month actual operations of Griffin Power for the 12 months ending March 31st, 2010. The previous study was in '06. And it's important to point out that the Griffin electric rates have been in effect since 1996. The rates have actually never been changed in the past 14 years. What has happened over that 14 years is the power cost adjustment has built up and that's covered the need for additional revenue. In the course of the cost study, of course, we allocate costs to classes of customers and those costs include purchased power, your bill to MEAG and SEPA is about 70% of your total expense. Your distribution system, which Mr. Bosch runs, accounts for a number of millions of dollars and also there are administrative costs that must be covered by the electric rates, including the transfer. The ratio of revenue to expense is really the bottom line of the cost of service study. That's what I'm going to show you. There are many, many calculations that are made in order to get to that point. Current PCA adjustment is 36 mils, 3.6 cents. This is the increase over 14 years. I mentioned earlier, the rate schedules have not been changed since '96, so that's the total rate adjustment over 14 years, been 36 mils, which is about 2.5 mils a year, which is $2.50 on an average size electric bill, that's not bad at all. That's recommendation that PCA has gotten, of course, very big, that that 36 mil adjustment should be reduced to 14 by taking 2.2 cents of every kilowatt hour and putting it into the rate schedules themselves. This is a revenue neutral change, both for the city and for all the customers. As Bill and I have both mentioned, we've got a $250 million budget over the next five years at Plant Shearer, which is down in Forsyth, Georgia. Based on Griffin's participation in that unit, of course, Griffin co-owns those units along with 48 other MEAG cities. Based on your participation and your anticipated sales over that same five-year period, that change at Plant Shearer will cost the customers of the city 7/10ths of one cent for every kilowatt hour sold in the next five years. And I'm sure knowing the federal government, they'll have something else for us to do by the time that period's over. So we'll have additional environmental costs coming at us. It is proposed then that that remaining 1.4 cents, which is still in the PCA after the roll-in, be split into two pieces, one of which is the environmental cost recovery and that would be .7 cents, seven mils, and the PCA would also be seven mils. They'll be divided into two pieces. Residential rate change, this is option one now, and you've had, I guess, option one since last week. They'll put them in your package. That was already approved. Option one for the, on the residential side is exactly what was presented in 2006 and approved by the commission at that time, was never implemented. And that is the change, it produces an extra $660,000 per year. As Bill said, we've got a shortfall in 2011, 2011 because of all these increases of about 1.5 million. So if we get $600,000 from the residential, we're going to need about another million from the businesses. And so the option one business rate add 984,000 for a total of 1.6 million. The option one charts, you've had these, maybe the colors aren't very good, I apologize. When you have a lot of curves on the same page, it's hard to find enough different colors without using pink and purple and stuff. This chart is one I told you about earlier, it's the main result of the cost study. It is a comparison of revenues with expenses. If revenue and expense are dead even, that number under the present rates will be zero. Any revenue that is made above the operating expense is available for the administrative expense, including the transfers to the city's general fund. The residential produces basically no income at all and the other classes of customers produce rather large amounts of margin. Just to help out a little bit with the designations. The GSND means general service non-demand, those are the smallest businesses, mom-and-pop type things. The SGS demand and LGS demand are larger businesses which have demand meters. The large general service demand is used for customers as big as supermarkets and Walmart. Then you've got an industrial class of customers, which is a very important group that includes Bandag and Exo-Pac and organizations such as that which have industrial SIC codes and which add value to the community through jobs, tax base, et cetera. The Griffins balding schools are on their own rate schedule, that's the school rates. And then the city bills itself for electricity when it serves activities such as the water treatment and sewer treatment plants, things like that. So there is an internal city rate and that also does well. So it's very clear to see that the residential is lagging there. This chart is a similar chart, it shows the price, the amount of money that customers paid for kilowatt hours in the past year that ended March 2010. It's the blue bar on each class. The white bar in the middle is cost and that cost includes all the expenses plus a proportionate share of the required margins. So that the residential price is well short of the residential cost because it does not provide any of the margins like the businesses do. And then the red bar is the option one proposed rate. So you can see in the case of residential, we have increased, going from the blue bar, which is what was paid, to the red bar, which is what the option calls to be paid. You can see that there's an increase there, the red bar is bigger, but it's still far short of meeting its total cost of service. On the same token, you can see that the business rates have all been increased slightly even though they are well above the cost. Any questions so far?
John, go back to that last slide just a moment if you would. There was a lawsuit in the City of Thomaston about 15 years ago.
You need to pull your mic down, too.
There was a lawsuit in Thomaston about 15 years ago when, I think it was one of the grocery stores sued the City of Thomaston over their MEAG rates.
That was a special case, that was a Walmart and they kind of held MEAG hostage. Walmart superstores are customer choice.
Wasn't part of the problem that was subsidizing residential rates so heavily?
Well, I think that is, that was the problem and that might have been what they complained about, but their real target was to get a rate reduction in the Thomaston location where they would not consider any MEAG city anywhere in the state for customer choice. In other words, if we competed against Georgia Power in a co-op in Covington, Georgia, they wouldn't even consider the Covington bid because the rate in Thomaston was higher than they wanted it to be. So, yeah, I mean, they do use that as well.
I guess my point is, do you see we have any problem not at least making residential customers break even?
Well, they are breaking even from the point of view of operating expense. They are just not contributing anything to the administration and general fund activities. And there's nothing illegal about that, as a matter of fact, it's quite common among the municipalities in Georgia that we serve that that is the case.
And also, Phil, if you'll notice, our industrial rate and our residential rate, there's a whole lot of difference. The difference between the market, the rate for the top of the line.
But it looks like we're not meeting cost in the residential category, that slide.
That's true.
Which is not just the city grid, that's common.
That is common. Now, the situation that caused me to panic a little is when the residential group does not even pay its own operating cost. And this operation is at a 12% or 14% loss.
So what you're showing and shaded in the gray, I guess, in the middle of the three columns is, is that just operating cost or cost plus margin?
Cost plus margin.
Okay. On the general service?
But it's meeting its own expenses. So this is not an extreme case in my experience with the other Georgia cities.
So y'all settled and did they settle instead of going to court?
The Walmart thing?
Yeah.
They just, for a three or four-year period, they would not consider the bids that Paul Warfel would make on behalf of the cities in customer choice. We've made a number of trips out to Bentonville, Arkansas with MEAG board members and what's currently ECG employees to talk to them and explain that the cities are not tied together at the hip in that regard. And if Thomaston was not interested in complying with the wishes of Walmart, that that was, there was nothing we could do about it.
Right.
You know, I think that Walmart-Thomaston is still open and I think they're probably still paying.
I was thinking they actually adjusted rates, though, they raised residential rates and came down off the?
I don't think they did that, but I could be wrong.
On the general services, the small businesses, that's where our jobs are and that's where the small business is suffering. And I'd like for us to look at figuring out how to reduce that.
You'll see.
I'm looking at that option.
Looking at the black folder?
Yes, sir, I've got option two in front of me.
Okay, the majority of what I have remaining in this presentation are just taking what you've already got on paper and pasting it into this PowerPoint. So we can discuss this as we go along. But the residential summer, these curves compare Georgia Power's present rate with Georgia Power's proposed rate. This Georgia Power case just got settled on Friday, so we don't have the final. This Georgia Power case just got settled, um, on Friday, so we don't have the final Georgia Power rates yet. They are not due to file them for another 28 days or so. But they got most of what they asked for. They got about 80 or 80 to 90% of what they asked for, so.
So when I, when I was looking through these, I was taken by the fact how much higher Georgia Power rates are than ours, and you say they got about 80 or 90% of that increase they requested.
Yes, they did. So, so if you go from the solid line, which is what Georgia Power's charging today, to the red dotted line, which is what they will be charging on January 1st, 2011, less than two months from now, they got about 90% of that.
Wow, we're gonna be way, way cheaper.
So, so all, almost all of the cities are now well cheaper than Georgia Power. Whereas when I came to you in 2006, Griffin could barely compete with Georgia Power.
What are the EMCs, pardon, what are the EMCs gonna do?
The EMCs, it's, it's hard to say. They don't share their strategic planning with us, so we don't know. Georgia Power, a lot of that is done in the sunshine because they're regulated. Of course, we know what our plans are, but we don't know what the co-op's plans are.
I think you can make some trade for something on fuel costs, full costs.
Yeah.
They're not gonna be able to absorb those heavy hits. It's just they're not as free with information as Georgia Power and the information we give to the city.
So we're considerably cheaper than EMCs now, and probably when they eat these cost increase, we'll still be cheaper.
Well, uh, we, we are cheaper than EMC, even under the proposed rate or the rate that the commission approved in '06. We're cheaper than them below 1,000 kilowatt hours. So from the average customer, you can see the crossover point, I can focus this thing, is, is right here. They're the blue curve. They become cheaper than Griffin for large users in the summer.
Our average residential customer is anywhere from 700 to 1,200 KWH. So we will be cheaper than everybody on our average residential customer.
Right. You know, other than a feel-good effect, when you talk about cities and every resident who lives in the city of Griffin has to get their electricity from us, it's only a feel-good thing because outside the city limits, you know, they can go with Georgia Power, EMC, or whatever.
Well, you're, and if you're a residential customer, you're pretty limited by territory.
You are. You can only get electricity from the city of Griffin.
Yeah.
So, other than a feel-good fact that we are lower than they are, you know, that's basically the, the excitement we get.
Right. That's bragging rights. Then in the winter, this applies to five months from May through September. And then in the winter, the curve looks like that. And again, the, um, city of Griffin approved rate from '06 is lower than the central Georgia rate, this time below 1,200 KWH. It's below Georgia Power no matter what. And again, Georgia Power got most of that rate increase. So competitively, for what it's worth, uh, the city is cheaper than the co-op for Georgia Power for most customers. This is a crazy chart. Um, this is the small business. Uh, I'll, I'll, if everybody can hear me. City of Griffin presently got a high rate. It's a solid black line. You can see how high this rate is. It's higher really than everything on the chart except for the Georgia Power proposed rate, which will be their actual rate coming up here in a couple of weeks. What we proposed to do back in '06 that was approved by the commission is go back and make the rate a good bit cheaper to make it at this level in the summer and that level in the winter, which was a very large rate increase that brought it down about the same as Georgia Power at the time. But since that time, Power's gone up a lot. So, uh, at this point in time, the small business rate for Griffin is significantly below Georgia Power. What we did as part of collecting this 900 and something thousand dollars to make the budget next year is we increased the already approved rate up to the level of the light blue line with the symbols on it. So let's compare those lines now with what Griffin is presently charging, which is a solid black line, and it is pretty much cheaper than the present rate. So the rate for the mom and pop businesses will be smaller, uh, when this rate case is approved, option one, than it is now and what's below Georgia Power. This one shows the limitations of the banner system. You all remember this in 2006, but I should too. Look at that crazy black line, the way it's moved, because it's got this, this continuity that it had to be designed in to, to be better to build. What we did in the 2006 case was we lowered that rate and we slowed it up so you can see the black dotted line. That's what was approved in 2006. And if we go back up in the option one case to the blue curve, uh, we're still gonna be lower than the present rate. But this is not really that much of a rate increase for these people under the new rate. And again, it's cheaper than Georgia Power, always lower load factor in this case we're looking at. An inefficient, single shift type company down at this end and a multiple shift for 24/7 business like a McDonald's of a business.
Uh, why is it that, um, the, the charts you have on the board is a little bit different from what I have here?
Should be the same. Oh, this, this one's got an extra curve. Bill came by the office yesterday. I was trying to show that.
Six on the first one. Yeah. It's a little different.
We added one more curve at the bottom of the chart, which is going to Georgia, uh, which is exactly Georgia.
That brown curve that's right there, that is, is the EMC, they have a commercial rate for 50 KW and less, and that rate, that portion of their commercial rate is cheaper than us. So we were just wanting to see where they were. It's hard to do an average comparison of, of commercial rates because we all word it different and we all structure it different. But we, I was just doing a sanity check to see where they were for that average commercial customer, um, which we won't be in a lot of competition for because it's not 900 or so. So I was just interested in where they were, and we're not really in competition with them on this rate.
This is, again, a larger commercial customer, this time 250 KW, so this is a special size of a small future market. Um, you can see that the blue curve now is a little higher than the solid black, which is what we're doing today, and therefore is contributing some to that 900,000 and increased revenue for next year. We had planned to, uh, six to lower than here, which was probably at or a little above Georgia Power, but they tried to run away from it when they're up here. So we're, uh, we're a penny and a half cheaper than they are for this type of customer. This is our industrial rate. Again, it's got that co-op curve on it. The rate currently is, I'm sorry, the rate currently is solid black for the, uh, the 1990, uh, 2006 rate case was a slight increase, uh, the commission approved it increased at the black at that time, and then the option one rate is a slight increase, which is still well below Georgia Power. Any questions about option one? Any further questions? Again, as a summary, residential rate is as approved in 2006, no changes whatsoever. The business rate, uh, they were lower substantially in '06, but they have been increased in option one by 900 and some odd thousand dollars. The total, the total will produce an extra $1,000,000 and a half to cover next year. Back to the topic.
If you look at your black folders now, we'll go into option two. Last time we had this discussion, um, we wanted to give, uh, option one puts a little bit more weight on the residential customer. Option two puts a little bit more weight on your commercial and industrial customers. The, uh, it doesn't give as much, uh, as a break on the, gives a little bit more break on the residential and, uh, what did I say that one? Actually, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, puts a little more weight on the CNI customer, option two puts a little bit more weight on the residential customer.
It also on the residential gives a little more break to the smaller households.
A little bit more.
It gives them a smaller break, but then puts a little bit more burden upon larger homes and what would be considered a higher income potential.
Which is some of the tough decisions you've got to have to take. So we wanted to give you both options and show you what it should look like now. Keep in mind, most cities are seeing a 10 to 30% increase. Some cities have a high of 30% increase they have to deal with this year. We're only dealing with a 6 or 7%. We are in very good shape, so what our customers are gonna see is not gonna be that much. On the last, on option one, an average residential customer, about a KWH, is gonna see about a $4 change. And this option you're gonna see here is gonna see about a $6 change, and then CNI customers get a little bit more of a break. So we're not talking about a great deal of impact. We are talking about an impact, but not a big impact. So we'll go through option two. Should be a little bit easier to, to go through that before we do option one.
Let's make this one harder to look at. We have even more curves on the same graphs, but, uh, what we've done here in option one, the present residential rate going to the approved rate of 2006. What it did is the low end of usage. This is your current charge of solid black. The approved rate from '06 is the dotted black. So that's actually a rate decrease up to 600 KWH that was approved, uh, four years ago. So what I would ask to do for option two was to make the option two rate about the same as the present rate, up to 600 kilowatt hours of use every month. So you can see that the blue dotted curve, which is the option two curve, compared to the black, which is what we're charging presently, is a little bit less, but it's almost the same thing. So compared to the rate that was approved in '06, we're actually generating more money by keeping the rate about the same as it is presently. And then what I was asked to do at the high end, from 1,000 kilowatt hours up in the summer, was to keep it right about where the approved rate is. So by doing those, those two simple things, we generated some more revenue from the residential class without really making the transition from the present rate to the proposed rate much different than the, than what was already approved in '06.
I, I think you probably said this earlier and I missed it, but what's our average customer residential in the summer?
Seven, in the summer?
Yeah.
Average year round, 700 to 1,200.
So it's exactly, um, for the year round, it's 1,037. That is the number that came right out of the cost of service work. So for the 12 months ending March 2010, the average use was right at 1037.
Okay.
In the very coldest months, it gets up around 1,200. In the very hottest months, it gets up around 1,200. In the mild, in the middle months, like October, it's around 700. That's why Bill says 700 to 1,200 because that's the monthly range.
So these, uh, our average user, the residential house out there, is where this curve is basically flat in the low point, and then for summer folks who really big residential users, it goes back up again.
Yeah.
Sort of like conservation pricing on water.
Yes, absolutely. You can see the way Georgia Power's curves are, and they've gone, I mean, they're high now, but when they were low back six years ago, they still had that same shape. The peaks in Georgia all happen in the summer. And when you start to pile on air conditioning, you're talking about increasing the city of Griffin's peak, which puts pressure on MEAG and Southern Company to have power plants available to meet that peak. And that's where the whole cycle of these expensive plant additions comes from.
Well, it's never made sense to have it keep dropping for big residential users. It shouldn't turn up like this, so.
Right. In, in the summer, which is the peak season.
Yeah, the peak season.
In the winter, we don't sell as many kilowatt hours, and we still own the same facility. So we want to sell more kilowatt hours in the winter as an electric system. Therefore, we want electrically heated houses, and we want people to use electric heat if we can help it, except that you guys are in the gas business too. So you have.
No, we're not in the gas business.
Oh, you're not? Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, you know, that's a, that's a ghost issue that I've heard as long as I've been on the commission, and it was really discussed when I first came on board in 2000. We'd have a former city commissioner say, what happened to the gas money? What happened to all this? We never heard, so we don't know. But it's, it's not our issue.
The gas, that's true.
Yeah, well, I know Bill Bosh wants to sell more energy in the winter and, and less energy in the summer and the extra.
Why do we have the different rates in the winter? Why don't we get the same rates year round?
Um, you could do that.
For residential?
You could do that. There is, uh, about two cities out of 49 that do that. It does not provide your customers a good price signal. When you're charging somebody nine cents when your power is cheap and you're charging them nine cents when your power is expensive, you're not, you're not letting them help manage your demand at all.
Well, but, but it just would be, you know, uh, we, an increase would be absorbed without it all of a sudden being saying, well, we're gonna increase you. Uh, most residential customers don't really know the difference.
The, um, summer rates are, what's the amount for the summer rate?
Summer rates are May through September.
Yeah. Now, you sell it cheaper to us in May through September?
More expensive in May to September.
Right.
Your, no, your MEAG bill is levelized.
Right.
You, you have got debt service that you pay on all your plants, and the reason you've got as much plant as you've got is because of your summer load and your summer load only. But MEAG does spread out your debt service payments over 12 equal payments. That is true.
Mr. Bosh, I agree with you 100% by what you just spoke on, making it, uh, comfortable for the citizen of Griffin, uh, customers of Griffin. Time's hard right now, and trying to keep this thing, uh, low as possible for the citizen of Griffin.
Let, let John quickly go through the option two, because I do want to show you the impact on residential customers and also the CNI customers. And he'll show you the impact, and we'll go through that quickly, and then I'll just, I'll give you a few quick opinions from myself, and then we'll get out of here today.
All right.
Okay, what we've, uh, this is the residential in the winter. We've got the same thing. We've made the proposal for option two, uh, about the same as the customers are presently paying. If they're a small customer, up to about 800 KWH, and the same thing that they would have paid if the rates, which were already approved by the commission, had gone into effect. by the commission, had gone into effect. So that's the option two residential. And then because of that, what we were able to do for the businesses right across the board is to take the option one rates and take .2 cent per KWH, two mils, off of all of those business rates. So in each one of these curves, you're going to see the same thing. You're going to see the blue curve, which is the option two curve, is just a little bit below the option one curve. Little bit below, two mils below. That is the same, no matter which one of these schedules you're looking at.
On the small, on that last slide, currently, we do not have a winter/summer rate for one.
No, sir. For small commercial, there is not a winter/summer rate, but the need for one is the same as residential. The city pays in reality more for power in the summer than in the winter.
In the cold, when you equalize that out, it comes to near the existing or even slightly below the price. But you know it'll be a slightly more impact in the summer, but nothing impactful.
And this is the 50KW. Again, the option two is two mils cheaper than option one. This is the supermarket sized load. You hardly even see it, but it gets busy right there in the middle. But if you look up on the left side, you can see it separated. And the industrial rate, what that basically does is bring it down below the approved rate, so there won't be an increase for the larger industries that have the most employment.
Do you anticipate EMCs to eventually raise?
Well, you know, you would think that they would go up. We don't know. The EMCs all have different power supply arrangements. I believe Central Georgia is probably growing at a somewhat decent pace, you know, maybe slowed down by this recession. But, you know, for example, they got the Delaware Sun City. That's going to be 3,000 or 4,000 customers that are all underground. They're not all electric, but they're, you know, that's, they're all tightly together. That's good for their growth. But of course, when you grow like that, you need power to serve those customers, and I'm not sure what arrangements they've got. Right now, with the price of natural gas being low, they might be able to go out and make some good power supply deals like Co-op did about 10 or 12 years ago. But those things all expired. So they, Co-op's are usually more volatile than the cities or Georgia Power. I've got an additional table that I'd like Bill to hand out that might help focus the conversation on the difference between option one and option two.
It's always nice to have it consistent.
Yeah, this is, this is the easier look at in those pictures. And I've kind of highlighted the important areas. I've highlighted the dollars per month of change for each of the cases in yellow, and I've highlighted the average user, which is 1,037 KWH per month. So that if you just follow on the yellow, the difference between option one and option two for the average user in the summer, there really isn't any difference. It's four cents. Where it's different is the rate that was approved by the commission in '06 called for a decrease. So if you look way up at the top, among the smallest users, in option one, there was a decrease of $3.23, whereas in option two, the rate stays about the same. If you look at the big customers, they're almost the same. 2,000 KWH, that's a house that uses a lot of energy in the summer, does a lot of air conditioning. The increase is $32, which is substantial. That's a price signal, not to use so much energy in the summer, but the difference between option one and option two is minimal. It's a dollar. If you look down at the winter months, the difference in the average size bill between option one and option two is a little over a dollar. Again, at the low end, whereas the approved rate called for a $3.23 reduction, the option two rate calls for about revenue neutral, 27 cent increase. But then down among the bigger users, there is an increased bill of $1,697 in option one, and $1,547 in option two. They're not much different. So those are the, those are the options. And remember that by adopting option two, you enable the businesses to be served two mils cheaper, and they're the ones that do the employing and pay the property taxes and all that stuff. So those are your options. If there are any more questions, I'll answer them.
No, I think you've given us an excellent presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If we go into conservation rates, I mean, now, Bill has made presentations to apartment complexes, which I think is fantastic, in the fact that we can give them our, I don't know if we giving it or selling it, a meter to show how much electricity they are actually using. And, you know, if we can make those available to people, we not only will we conserve electricity, but our bottom line is, we may also not get as much revenue. So how will that affect us?
You've got the best of all infrastructures that's being installed out in the field. Compared to our cities, you're one of the first three out of 49 cities to do this. So you've got a big learning curves and all that, and you've got software to buy, but you're off to a great start in being able to help your customers to understand the cost of power and to control their loads better ultimately. I mean, you're taking the first step, but it's a giant step.
Right. He said we're number one.
Sorry.
Very quickly, thank you, John. What I would ask the commission to do is just a fundamental decision between option one and option two. Option one, if you take these two sheets very quickly out of both options, you'll be able to see each one of them has a percentage of what it would mean to each customer. On option one, for instance, the residential customer is about 4.5%, on option two, it's 6.5%. And then it affects the CNI customers that you'll be able to look at. So what I would ask you to do is consider both options, and then also consider whether you want to break out .7 of the PCA and put that on a separate line item on the bill for an environmental charge. The PCA, if this is approved, either way, it's going to be 14. But seven of that can be broke out into an environmental charge, and whether you want to list that, or whether you want to leave it in the PCA, that's totally up to you. I can do it either way. Just depends on how you want to show that on the bill. So I would ask that you consider option one, option two, and then also how you want to handle the environmental charge. Any questions?
Does this protect our trust fund as well, does it not, Bill?
Yes, it's.
It's amazing.
Well, I can tell you, I think option two makes better sense to me, so.
I mean, if you want to hold on it tonight, talk to the boss, but the, I'm asking it by December 14.
Are you asking us to vote tonight or?
No, December 14.
Yeah, okay.
And that way, if you have any questions, I can give you any information you need. So thank you very much, Mr..
All righty, tonight's meeting is pretty simple and straightforward. We'll recognize our employee of the month, and Mr. Whalen will have a public hearing in regard to our reapportionment.
My head, the current plan map is available if anybody wants to look at it for tonight, just to refresh you on where you currently are.
Oh, you're going to have what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Public hearing on?
Yeah, I know we're going to have a public hearing. You said you also had.
No, I said the current map is over here if anybody wants to look at it for tonight.
Are there any numbers out on the census? Or eliminate numbers? One of those.
Any corrections to the minutes that we can make?
I found none.
First item to be voted on is the purchase of a 2011 Ford Expedition. We have actually replaced this Jeep a couple of times, but we continue to use it just to get the last drop out of it. And we've got the last drop out of it, so we need to replace it, and Bill is requesting that we get money out of the scrap fund, which has about $182,000 in it.
I commend our electric department for keeping up with all the scrap, and that adds up good money, so smart business.
We're pretty much selling everything we can surplus, everything we can get our hands on.
Careful how you say that.
A lot of the scrap fund come from the old Thomas property? Have we scrapped that?
Are you in the car business now?
All the scrap that we do is all the top, old top of wire that was in the ground. And as you figure out, about 180 grand. We don't want to touch this real often because we want to use it in the future at the Thomas property, but we were able to do this for our non-Thomas property.
Good.
Item number six is a contract with Southeastern Wood Pole Inspectors for our pole maintenance. And item number seven is a contract with Tatum's for removal and pruning of trees for public works.
This is different. We've always had that other outfit do our trees. Can't think of the name of them.
Dunn Tree Service. Dunn's been doing it.
No. Oh, okay, that's where I'm missing. I'm thinking electric department. You're doing it for public works. Okay, got you.
Item number eight is a contract with Manley to do the acquisition of easements for the 210 CDBG. And item number nine is an internal governmental agreement with the county on the 319 grant. That's all we've got tonight.